You're good? Okay, so it's 6:01, I'm gonna call the regular select board meeting to order. First thing is, adjust agenda. Our agenda, I feel, is plenty long. Is there anything anybody wants to strike from it?
We could table item... I gotta find it, I'm sorry. Item four to the next meeting, but I think it'll be quick, so it's up to you.
Yeah, let's keep, leave it.
Okay.
All right, okay. So we're in a role with the agenda as written. Communication from the audience? Are we a little, a little bit thin with the audience?
They're all in the pool.
They're all in the pool. Next is to approve minutes from the last regular meeting, which was June 16th, and the last special meeting, which was July the 14th.
Can I do them all together?
Do them separately, because I can, I wasn't at one. Or I will abstain from one, or whatever.
I move that we approve these minutes as written.
Which ones? 16th, June 16th? Okay, June 16th.
Second.
Second. Any discussion on the June 16th minutes? So, all in favor of approving them as written, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Next, motion is for the...
July 14th.
And you're gonna move that we accept them?
Move that we accept them as written.
Second?
And we have a second. So any comments on those minutes for the special meeting? All in favor of approving them as written, please say aye.
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 Abstain.
And one of, so four ayes, one abstention for that, from the absentee, because we held that in the middle of the day. All right, so motion carries, thank you. And, thank you for staff for putting together good minutes. Super helpful. Next, Town Manager's Report, given by David Upson.
All right, Tracy Martin started as our new Community Development Coordinator on July 5th, and has been getting acquainted with the job as jumping in with both feet. Her office is on the third floor here, which she loves.
Great.
Tracy's working on just getting a list of the grants we have going, ongoing, getting a list of available funding opportunities, matching it up with, working with her. We've got the whiteboard downstairs, we got a list of projects down there. So we're just trying to get a plan of attack and go after, you know, go after the programs that we can utilize to get the projects done off the list.
Awesome.
So more on that as the new position, or the new employee progresses. The Meet the New Town Manager gatherings concluded with the last meeting on the 27th. We haven't had a meeting for almost a month. The meetings were attended by 211 people, which led to constructive discussions and thought-provoking dialogue. The document outlining the themes, quotes from individual participants, and potential solutions to some of the hot topics is available on the town's website. We gotta put that on tomorrow. Stay tuned for another round of gatherings hosted by the Neighbor to Neighbor Group. So they're working on how they're gonna move forward with their mission, and which we will support at the town level, hopefully. Gary Nolan Consulting LLC has presented me with a preliminary report. I put the email that he sent to me in the folder, so I thought it would be helpful. I just kinda summarized that Gary concluded that the purchasing of the Davis gravel pit would be a positive long-term investment, in his opinion. Just throw out a couple things. There's currently an estimated 36,000 to 48,000 cubic yards left in the southern extraction area, and I have some maps that I can share. And that's where we're currently getting our winter sand, as well as several other towns. They're trucking sand as we speak, or, you know, during the day. So, in the southern extraction area, and on the conservative end would be about nine years left of sand reserves, just in that area. The area of long-term interest is the southern future extraction area, which is approximately 5.2 acres, with the potential to yield 125,000 to 165,000 cubic yards. So, at our current rate of 4,000 yards per year, and using the median of 145,000 cubic yards in available sand in that future extraction area, we're looking at about 36 years of sand, potentially, for the town.
With, with a byproduct of material.
Correct. This is, this is just, so just wrap your head around this one product.
Right.
The winter sand. So we budget for about 30,000 a year for sand, and 60,000 a year for crushed gravel. So, crushed gravel is a byproduct of screening sand. So we can take that product and do, do a crush, crush-run mix with that. So, that would, that would be the available byproduct of the screening for sand, for an average of $350 per yard, which the current rates to purchase are about $4.75 to $5.00 a yard. This, so, just that part, just the sand and crushed gravel part, it makes it an attractive investment. If you add on the opportunity to open up the amendment to the Act 250 permit, which is doable for the extraction of the northern phase, for the quarrying of ditch stone and coarse and fine stamen. So that's like your, your next level material for road building. And, and there's ditch stone, you know, is, is a coarser, you know, which you don't crush. So we could use that, like a riprap, but a ledge riprap, not granite. So there's, there's that whole thing. So Gary suggested we dig some test holes rather than boring, for a cost-saving measure. Kenny Davis said he'd provide a man and an excavator to do that. There's some other, you know, potential, you know, purchasing the equipment at the pit to use in the deal. And then Gary sugge, or Gary also would provide more explanation of operating a sand and gravel pit, and then quarrying, the quarrying aspect of it. So blasting, crushing. If we, if, I wanna just kinda piecemeal this. So if we wanna move forward with this, we can invest a little bit more in the consulting fees to have Gary explain this more. And, go ahead.
I just wanna add a little context.
Yep.
Because, I mean, and you've been thinking about this, and I've been thinking about it, but maybe if anybody's watching.
Yeah.
We do currently have a town gravel pit where we do a lot of these activities. We extract gravel, we have some crush, and, so we do that. But, we're looking at maybe two years left of material in our pit. We've been down in there for quite a while, and, so, now's the time to start thinking about what we're gonna do next. Are we just gonna buy all our material, or are we gonna look for another pit? And that's why we're spending a little energy looking at this.
Yeah.
And this is basically saying, if we were to buy, continue to buy material, it would be this, for now, $4.75 to $5.00 per yard.
No, good.
Probably go up if we were, that's what we're currently spending?
On just crushed gravel, yeah.
Yeah, but crushed gravel, we're like $12.00 a yard, not $4.00 to $5.00.
$4.00 to $5.00 is sand, I think.
Crush run is $12.00 a yard.
Sand is six.
So that part, yeah.
Sand is six, right?
Sand. So just the sand. So, we need to run the numbers, basically.
Yeah, yeah, no, the numbers, the numbers are quite terrible.
Well, so we budget 90 a year between gravel and sand. Like, that's what's in the fiscal year '23. So, assuming we spent it all, 90 grand a year.
Yeah.
Look forward to the report.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we wanna have him continue to, yes. That's, the board, does somebody wanna make a motion, or do we just wanna generally?
I'll just continue on the path, I mean, we're...
The board generally agrees?
We're looking at this.
Everybody's on board?
Because the next thing is gonna tell us what is, you know, it's gonna have things like man-hours to do the quarry, so we know...
Right.
The actual cost.
What the equipment's gonna cost.
Yeah.
Right.
Right now, we rely on a contractor to come in and do it, a vendor, basically, to do the crushing, which sometimes, you know, that machinery is very expensive, maintenance, maintenance, you know, strong, so.
We probably wanna continue doing that.
But we'll see, yeah, yeah, because I, we don't have the staff to do it.
Right.
I mean, there's potential, there's, there's many different possibilities of management. We could go in with three other towns and hire a company to come in and make, make the material we want for the, for the year.
Right. And then now, we need, like we do now, we have to provide loaders, a van, and dump truck, which we have.
Yeah.
Trouble with screens and crushers and stuff, they're very maintenance-heavy, and they're very expensive, and you gotta have people to run them, and...
And the problem...
Dangerous, and there's just all kinds of stuff that goes with it. Where, when McCulloughs comes in...
Right.
Mile.
So they're like a contract operator, come in. And then another thing, the other thing too is, places like this are not going to exist.
No, they're not.
And this, the powers that be are not really too keen on opening up new places like this.
Nope, but they will be keen on...
Gravel pits, permitting, yeah.
But they'll be keen on...
Extract, earth extract.
One that is already permitted. Amendments are gonna be, you know, in areas like this. That's the other thing that's important about that area. The area is good for expansion.
Yeah.
It's not right next to the something, you know, like school, or a community, you know what I'm saying? There's, there's some neighbors, but they're, they're...
They're distant.
They're, they, they, you know.
And they're not that many.
The closest neighbor now just purchased it, and it was a quarry operating pit, you know, so.
Yes.
But, if they pay 14, I held someone out of this the other last week.
Yeah, I was taught how you...
14 is brutal, right?
Yeah, but they're, they're replacing all the culverts right now.
But honestly, there's not, I mean, Walker from Stowe gets their stuff off the hill up here in McVeigh. Salvis comes out of Wilkett. Minos is either Eden or Wilkett. You know, people are traveling great distance. Every, literally every shovel full of dirt, or even dirt-related product that goes to Stowe comes from at least 30 miles from Stowe.
Right.
Every single, I'm not kidding, and I've been operating there, quarrying Stowe area for 15 years.
So continue.
Yep.
Good work.
10-4. And then, this is part of the Community Development Coordinator's, what she's working on. The Planning Commission has recommended that the town of Harterick pursue an Action Plan Grant through the newly-formed Safe Streets and Roads for All, for All program out of the U.S. Department of Transportation. The program funded the new infrastructure dollars, or, the program funded with new infrastructure dollars offers both planning and implementation grants. So, basically, you, we could do a study on the safety of our, our roads, and really with the goal to, or to decrease accidents and injury. The minimum grant of work, go ahead.
Yeah, you know, the only problem I have with grants like this is we don't need to identify more problems. We need grant funding to take care of the problems that we've already identified.
Does it, does it apply to sidewalks?
That's a planning dilemma I have, is...
I don't think so.
Don't need to plan for anymore.
So it's not like a bylaw?
Find any more places to spend money, we need to have the money to spend.
Yeah. I, I didn't...
I got one right, I got one right here in the pot.
I did have this conversation about getting these, we're, we're investing in more planning grants, and the matches, and how much do we wanna invest in more planning where we could maybe invest directly in the, the engineering, and...
To be fair, I would want to know more.
These projects.
You know, I'd need to look into it more to see what we're planning for.
Oh, that's perfect, because in the...
Whoops.
Further on in the explanation is...
I gotta start reading these things.
We are hoping to have a member of the Select Board and a member of the Planning Committee work with the Community Development Coordinator to explore this opportunity further to determine if it is a good match for our current needs. And what a better person than a critic.
I'm sure they'll feel the same way.
But, but, we need somebody, we need somebody to look at this with a critical eye.
Well, and it may not be a good match for...
Right.
You have to agree, you have to, you don't have to agree with it, you're trying to say what I'm saying.
Absolutely, yeah.
We're gonna spend 20%, it's gonna be, that's, that's... 40,000.
Well, we don't have to go for 200,000.
No, but, yeah, so I will learn more about it.
Yes, thank you, Dan, thank you.
Because if it has...
He gets MVP of the meeting, right here, and we're only at the beginning of it.
Same thing.
So the other thing is, sometimes it says it's for planning and implementation, but sometimes they won't give you the implementation money unless you have the plan.
Exactly, and that's, very good point.
You know, it's funded with infrastructure dollars, so, you know, if we can figure out a way to get some planning for this thing, so that we get the design, and that'd be great.
And then that leads us into the implementation grant.
This is like the cart, this is, or this is the horse. So we gotta have the horse before we put the cart on the horse.
Well, you got part of the horse on the committee now.
Yeah, there you go.
Hey, the front.
You got one end of the horse on that one here.
All right.
Which end is it?
Exactly.
I think some would...
Well, this year, I give up Church Street and doing the whole planning for that.
Totally.
Potentially, that would be a thing that maybe this would match with.
That does happen.
Yeah.
When it's actually the street.
Normally, I can meet during the day, but the other day, I just got moved out.
Yeah, you just, we'll, we'll make it work for you, how's that?
Yeah, yeah, I like it.
So, I'm done. Unless you guys have any questions, you can always reach out to me. But also, I can give Tom's report, because he's not here, so I'm prepared to do that.
Can I first ask, is there anything new with the bridge? Is there any update?
The SE group is, they're gonna, we're gonna kick this off in August. They're, they're very busy, and they're, they're working on, closing out a bunch of projects. But I talked to Adam last week, or the week before, and he said we're gonna go hard starting in August, and should have a design by the middle to end of October. Two designs. So I'm going as fast as possible.
That's fine, I just wanted, I, I know people ask, and they ask me, and I'm like, oh, why don't you ask Opie?
Somebody asked me to do it then.
You know?
I was asked about it today.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So I got lost this morning, and wound up at Chip Troyano's place, and he asks about the charter change. Have we heard anything more about the charter change?
No.
No.
Good question.
He said everything's been signed.
Yep, and he said every time I talk to him, he says he'll check into it, but nothing yet.
But then, yet, he was asking.
I thought that was, I mean, little do I know, I thought that was all taken care of.
The legislature, did they approve it?
We haven't heard anything, but...
I thought they approved it.
So we're waiting on the state.
So they approved it, it just hasn't, go ahead.
Right.
Well, that was, that was...
I think he said that they did.
That's what I heard, that last email I got said they approved it.
Yeah.
And the question, it is, did the governor sign it?
Oh, 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 okay.
Right.
Well, that makes more sense, so he would ask that.
Which, doesn't, it's supposed to happen so many days after so many days, but doesn't always.
Okay. I mean, there's, the LVRT management plan was supposed to be out, I think, May 1st. They changed the due date on the website, so...
I like the fact that they actually have one in place now, that they just totally ignore.
Legend.
Legend, yeah. We worked on it for 10 years.
Okay.
All right.
Any other questions? So, Church Street sidewalks, they're hauling winter sand, and they've been working on different sewer plugs here and there. We got a big, we got the lagoon at the waste, this is kinda not the reformer's report, but he's been part of it.
Public works.
The lagoon, lagoon number two is, is empty. Our power is, is almost operational for the dewatering of the lagoons. So, P&amp;H Senna Sack is gonna mobilize next week, and they're hoping to start dewatering soon. But everything's in place to, we're running off of one lagoon. We have the hydraulic curtain, we moved over. Our chemical addition point has been moved, and effluent looks pretty good. So that's where we're at with that project.
And you got the, you are setting up for to use electricity instead of an diesel generator...
Right, because...
To save us money and make it more efficient.
On, well, yeah.
On the dewatering, right?
Yep, yep. So, yeah, there's that.
That's awesome.
Yeah, well, there's a lot going on.
Have they got through their vacations yet, or?
Kenny's on vacation, I think, but, he deserves it.
So, August, we...
They all deserve it.
I'm not questioning that, I'm just saying, it's, you know, it's tough in the summer, because they have to get those in, and...
Yeah.
So are we back to full crew on, in August, or are there still more vacations?
No, I might take a vacation.
Yeah.
Is there, this is a good question for you, Opie, than for Tom, but what's the update on the state finishing the bump outs?
Oh, thanks for...
There are quite a few drains that are a few inches above the grade. Are those gonna get...
For a reason, so that's why they did, they raised them for the, for the last coat.
Yeah, there's still another coat of, they're gonna do a final coat, a finer coat of asphalt, and that's gonna line up slightly higher than the catch basins.
Okay.
So, all those places where you're seeing standing water...
Yep.
Those will be going down, the catch basins, in near future.
Like Corfet Street.
And they're waiting to do the bump, they're like working on the...
So I was curious about that.
They're over at the market today.
Yeah, because they seem to be working during the day, and they said they were gonna work at night.
There's...
Lots of people are asking, so...
Yeah, yeah, no, I get it. Yeah, I've been asked too. So, they're working on raising all the structures, so the catch basins, the manholes, the curb stops, the, all the valve covers, the excesses. So, once they get all those raised, they dug out the, they've done the cutouts, they're waiting on some of the stamped concrete bump outs now, which is, I think, a different contractor that are, that's doing those.
Because there's still some to come, right? Front of the co-op.
Yeah.
They haven't done that one yet.
No.
They've cut it, they've cut it.
They've cut it, they just...
Oh, they have.
Yeah, there's one down by Tracy's. So, the engineer is, is pushing for mid to late August for the final coat of asphalt.
Okay.
So it's coming. They have until November of 2022 to finish the project.
It was confusing that there was a sign down on Wilkett.
Yeah, they had one that flashed out.
That said that Route 15 was gonna be closed, or whatever, for construction. But I think it had to do with the...
That was Walden, yeah.
Yeah, it was that bridge.
It closed, yeah.
Yeah, which is a detour, they sent them all the way to North Mount Hill.
It was confusing.
That's the name, really, yeah.
Yeah, connected, you came up to the red light, and they sent you down 14th South.
Yeah, all the way down to East Mount Hill, to...
All the way back to Route 2, because they didn't want...
Because they were doing that overpass for that rail.
Just for 24 hours.
Could've sent them a car, could've went up to Cabot and gone around, come by the fire station. Trucks could.
I don't think, I think they, but they have to...
Right, because trucks could make that corner.
Yeah.
So basically, they're putting in, okay, so it sounds like something's in process, and it's gonna be, this is like the temporary coat before the final.
Yeah.
Yeah, what's there now is the temporary.
Yeah, and all the lines, all the lines will change.
Yep.
If you see how everything's got white paint around it, so they can see it, and they...
That makes sense.
Yeah, and they're resetting a lot of the signs.
Yep.
They're replacing some of the faded signs. And, yeah, and then, there was one other project too, I just wanted to bring up, but...
We got...
Awesome, thank you.
Lot going on, all good stuff.
Paving, we have our, their...
Regular paving.
Yep.
I think maybe next week.
Yep, that's gonna, for the side streets.
Like the side streets that are on this...
Can you remind us where we're paving this year?
Church Street, right?
Lower Cherry.
Lower Cherry.
Lower Cherry, yeah.
I don't know all of them.
In that neighborhood, kind of? Because usually, they're clustered.
Usually, it's somewhere around there, if, with Elm Street, maybe.
Elm Street, another one?
Down in there.
Yeah, so Elm, I think, Lower Cherry.
Dale Street.
Cottage.
West Church.
Okay, so that neighborhood, yeah.
I understand we'll make some streets smoother, but then we make other streets impassable with speed bumps. Seems like an awful waste of money.
It's, we're trying to change people's behavior on that street.
It's changed mine, I don't have anybody on that street.
Right. Thank you.
Those are brutal, I don't, there's speed bumps everywhere. I don't know if you got special, brutal, you know?
I ordered that, I ordered the extra large ones.
Yeah, huh? No, no, I...
But the grand, the long-term plan...
I don't have a problem with it, it's a residential street, so I don't...
But the long-term plan is to do something that's more like a speed table, or speed hump, or something, right?
Yeah, but, you know, there's one of those down in Berry, they put in, and I honestly, it doesn't slow me down anymore than... I mean, I'm not speeding, but I'm not speeding.
Yeah, well, if you were, it would make a difference.
The speed on this is 25 miles an hour, I'm not speeding.
If everybody went the speed limit, there wouldn't be a problem.
I guess, and I guess I say, I'm not...
Well, ideally, wouldn't it, wouldn't it be the ideal that the bump, you could travel at, or below the low-posted speed limit?
Yeah.
It's just when you go over, it's just like...
Yeah, well, it's down here, work for that. I'm not complaining, they work like they were, they're at work, so...
And, and they're temporary.
Right.
And it's a test.
And they're being on changes to the...
But it's also, you know, some of those people that have bad behavior and speed on that street anyway are driving up into the lawn to avoid the...
Really?
Or at Highland.
Not helpful.
Really?
So, they, yeah.
Big ball.
So they're gonna, the hump is gonna go all the way across.
Okay, all right, so I'm from the hump.
Let's get to the good news, Tanya.
Moving on.
Well, no, we got, we've...
And then Mike.
Yeah, we've got the police department still yet to go. Mr. Henry, welcome.
Thanks. Busy day. I think, you know, we've done a bunch of upgrades with a lot of our computer systems at the police department, because found out that most of them were, what, 12 to 15 years old? And, so, we upgraded five of them. One of them being our, our data storage unit, which was a big problem. So now we've got that all set up. Also upgraded our, our security system with the, we were updated with that pretty bad as well, so... That's up and running, we use that with funds. We also, I've got my glasses here, I can't even read my own handwriting.
Do I have any glasses?
Maybe. That helps. Started a new Facebook page. We're working on also putting up a webpage, so that, because the webpage that we had, I don't know if anybody looked at that before, it was, wasn't very good, but...
Minimum.
It was minimum, yeah.
Is it linked to the town page?
It will be, once we get it up and running, it will be linked to the town page. But, the plan is to get information out there for everybody, and also put on downloadable forms that everybody's looking for, they're calling the police department for, you know, accident reports, uh, you know, trespass letters, that type of stuff, so you can download it from right there.
Police office has a lot of experience in trying to get that stuff online.
Yeah, so hopefully, you can go to one, one area, it'll be linked to the town page, uh, that's the plan with that. So, a lot of technology stuff that we're trying to get up and, uh, going there, uh, most of it's, uh, already done, but the webpage will still be working on it. Um, and then, so. We're working on, uh, the cruisers, all of our cruisers are marked up now, so we had one, uh, unmarked there for a while, that's marked up. Um, I wanted everything marked. Uh, we started the, the bike patrol, I don't know if anyone's seen that out there.
Yeah.
Hey, I got the bike patrol, I got the bike patrol, now, I'm like, no.
Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't authorize that bike motorcycle.
Yeah.
I said.
How about next year?
E-bikes.
Yes.
I think e-bikes.
Yeah, I think, I think we'll talk about that next year. It just came down to costs and trying to get up, get the money. But, uh, yeah, we just fixed up what was already there and, uh, put a few of the guys out there every once in a while, and we're doing more foot patrols.
Yeah, no, I heard it, I heard it in a positive way.
Me too, actually.
I hear a lot of positives, yeah.
I think, uh, you know, getting into some of those areas too, just, uh, the presence, we've been able to do with more people, we've been able to do a lot more proactive stuff. Um, and I think, you know, the, the quality of life issues, hopefully, are getting a lot better. We're getting a lot of positive feedback on our end, I don't know if you guys are getting the same, but, uh, that's what we're hearing, uh, just the proactive out there. Um, you know, we've had a lot of good incidents too, George Shelbrick. We got a suicidal guy with a gun, uh, threatening to take his own life, and, you know, I got a lot of accolades back from people cause George Shelbrick went up there, talked to the guy, uh, talked the guy down, um, ended up getting him into the Brattleboro Retreat, and he was all good. Uh, so, uh, good success story there. Um. So, we've also, I'm sure you've probably heard this too, been executing a lot of search warrants lately, um, taking a lot of people, uh, getting a lot of rest, uh, people with warrants, taking them off, uh, just in the last few weeks, we've executed three search warrants on houses. Um, we've, today, we just picked up, uh, a couple of stolen vehicles, somebody went out to, uh, residents and, uh, just started looking around, said, a couple stolen vehicles here, so.
Good job.
Those, that was today. Uh, the other thing is, we, we had a big federal audit, uh, that we got that all completed, and that's all submitted. We actually had to get an extension for that because it was, uh, pretty, uh, it had to be pretty thorough, and we had to make some policy changes as a result of that. So, hopefully, that's, uh, it's been submitted. They gave us an extension for a month, we, we got it by a week, so, we're, we're done with that at this point.
Is that, is that something that recurs every so many years?
Every three years, and I don't know how they got by it before in the past because the policies had to be written that weren't in there. Something else that I'm still working on, it's gonna take, uh, hopefully in another month, we'll have all the policies rewritten. I'll have them all, uh, digital and accessible to everybody else. Um, we do have now our schedule, uh, for the officers, which used to be handwritten on a piece of paper, now we have that, uh, digital, it's on everybody's phone. Um, so, it just makes it so much easier, uh, bringing that forward. We had a, uh, a grant from, I'm gonna say Governor's Highway Safety, but I'm gonna get corrected.
State Highway Safety.
State, State Highway Safety, that we found that we had six thousand dollars nobody knew about, uh, so, we got that money. We utilized that money to buy a handheld radar, we also are getting one of those solar, uh, radar signs. The ones that we have now, we have two that are battery operated, and the only problem with that is, I'm sure everybody's seen that, you know, after a couple of days, the batteries go dead, we gotta go out, charge them, they're not working. Those are movable. The problem with the solar one is it has to be fixed. So, we're looking at posting that out on Route fifteen by the end, where the other one is. I don't know if anybody has any suggestions of a better place, but it's gotta be permanently fixed in someplace where there's good sunshine.
Um, I, I would like, I think that's a good spot.
So that frees that, there's one there now, right?
That frees that one, and that one could be movable.
That's a portable one.
That's a portable.
So, so I think down, I, I've been thinking about this a lot, every day I drive to work and I'm going too fast, and I come into the Village Limits, and we could put one there, and we could put a.
Like by the water.
By the, by the well.
Yeah, by the well.
Or we could push it further up, coming down.
Does the change, the speed on it change here?
Thirty-five. It goes to thirty, it goes to thirty.
By the well, yeah.
So, I like that area because we could put a sign up that says, you know, speeding strictly enforced for ta, for people coming into Woke Street.
Well, that's right before the first crosswalk.
Right.
Which is kind of against.
So, don't mean to steal your.
Yo, but the other way I like too, though, where, where that one is, because people do roll.
We can get multiple.
Oh, you can have more than one.
No, we can't.
But we can buy one.
Well, it's four thousand dollars for the solar one.
Can't buy another one this year, but.
Yeah, right, so the only way we got this is through that grant.
Right, but, but we, we've got.
I say that, that'd be better, for the first one, down there.
Because that, that one's gotta be permanently fixed, and the other ones, we can still move around wherever we want.
Move that one down there, they're both good spots, too, we can figure out.
The other thing we have to think about is, uh, you know, in terms of vandalism or theft or something like that. I think that's a good location, but, uh, for one that's gonna be there permanently.
I think so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, do it, get it down.
All right, well, we, we purchased that one.
Good work.
Oh.
So, I really like somewhere.
Um, so, I think that's.
That's enough.
Pretty much it, uh, for now.
That's quite a bit.
Yeah.
Well, is there an area where the vehicle thefts were happening, like a general area in town?
Vehicle thefts?
La Moya.
This, they came out, yeah, they were out of La Moya, we just happened to find them up here.
They were just here, interesting.
Yeah, um, but I'm sure there's a lot more around here.
Yeah.
Well, I've seen a lot more action with you guys around, so, a lot more, a lot more. It's very nice, very good. Seeing all times a day, night, on the street, seeing multiple, just like this barely, so, you know, multiple people on duty.
You guys got a, was it a side-by-side that we were going to get to for the trip, for the trail?
Oh, I don't know, that was, I don't think that was very, I was pretty skeptical of that.
I think.
We were gonna deputize you and put you in.
I think that the e-bike, for the future with LVT.
Yeah, that's great.
Having some e-bikes for, for responding and even patrolling the rail track.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I did see our last great public police officer in town working again this week, too, glad it was.
Yeah, I thought I saw you.
Yeah, he's working for the Sheriff's Department.
Sheriff couple days a week.
He did a double take.
He's greedy.
Yeah.
So, but he did a great job as, as being in, you know, as a community police officer, he was, he did an excellent job of that. I was, I was a big part of what he did here that, that was really attractive and, and about, so.
Um, does any, anybody have any update on the communication link to the, um, dispatch at?
Working on the phone line, right?
Um, well, I'm working on the phone line, I'm also working on, uh, possible other locations, it's, yeah, I.
That's a big ticket item.
Is it?
It could be.
It's a, it's a.
Well, it's.
Long-term payment.
Yeah.
It needs to be rec, it needs to be fixed.
Right, we talked about it.
There's no reason why we can't have.
We fixed it a couple of times, you thought already, and it.
Yeah, we did, we put money into it, uh, Burlington Communications keeps saying they're gonna come up, they're gonna check it again, and I'm just not, just not getting anywhere with them, but they're unfortunately the only game in town right now for that.
Okay.
I have some other question maybe for our next meeting, Mike, cause we, um, I think we've mentioned this at a meeting before, but, um, we also have, again, on the agenda tonight, um, appointing another police officer. It'd be really great at our next meeting to get, like, some sort of report of where we are with staffing and how the budget's doing with the HPD and just especially with like the script coming in, it'd be nice to just, like, take a look at how, just how the department's doing.
Right, it's a.
It's a good time of year, too, to take a look at that, like the beginning of the year.
On that note, we just got, uh, one out of the academy, so he just started, uh, yesterday for us, but it's a three-month field training program, so, be a while before he's out on his own, so.
Yeah, but through the academy is a big step.
Yep.
Thank you.
Great. Thanks so much.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, um, next is, uh, the Hardwood Electric Department report given by Mike Sullivan. Are you still with us, Mike?
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Can you slide him over and make him big?
Okay, can you hear me good?
Make him big.
Yeah. Pretty good.
Yeah, yeah.
Can you hear me, are you okay, or?
Yeah.
Yes.
All right. More leads here for you. Woke Hydro is, uh.
Do you need the?
Put out over ten million in Delaware, was still far this year, which is thirty percent over budget, very happy about that, save us money. The H eleven is also about twelve percent over budget, uh, which is our cheapest source of power right here at Hardwood, and, uh, on our contract basis, so we're very happy about that. Our LiDAR project, which was the, the, uh, satellite laser imaging of our pole lines and the entire system, uh, which we started last fall, finally got complete, uh, because the LiDAR system isn't capable of, obviously isn't capable of seeing through heavy canopies of trees and, uh, stuff like that, and also, the, the technicians doing that work kind of get off on tangents once in a while, and they'll be going down our line, and then where the pole line, uh, our line split, they'll go down the wrong line, so all those little errors had to be cleaned up, and that took several months, but that's all done now. Uh, and the Northeast Kingdom CUD has all those GIS files and all our pole locations, so they can now start all their design and make ready plans, and, uh, good things rolling on their end. So, that was a good thing to get done. Uh, HED's most recent PUC service standards, which is our performance measures by the regulators, which we can be financially penalized for, uh, we came in excellent, which is a direct, uh, bragging right for our crews. The thing, the three biggest things they measure are lost time accidents, which we had zero. Uh, the next one is outage frequency, which we came in fifty-four percent better than the requirement. And the third one is outage durations, and we came in thirty-one percent better than the requirements on those, so hats off to our crews for that. Uh, happy to report that last year's sewer system project for the warehouse, where we had our temporary sewer facilities as a port of body in the warehouse, have been completed, we're all tied in the municipal system now, thank goodness. That was a good thing to get done. Uh, purchase power, we are about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars over budget uh, so far this year, and that is due to this past January, February, being the highest winter, uh, costs ever reported by ISO New England. So, just being off by one percent, uh, the costs for that energy were about three hundred and fifty dollars a megawatt hour, where we normally see prices at about fifty dollars a megawatt hour. And we're only covered at about ninety percent, so we took a hit in January, February on those. Uh, happy to report, though, that we're coming into our best performing months of the year, June, July, August, September, and, uh, we're already, the first month of those is coming in at about fifteen thousand under budget, so, we'll recover a lot of that, but probably not all of it, but on a three-point-six million dollar budget, we're, we're gonna be okay. Uh, year-to-date revenues are three-point-three percent over budget, and expenses are running high about four percent over budget.
Sorry, expenses are how much over?
Four percent.
Four percent? Expenses were how much over?
Uh, four percent over budget on expenses.
Okay.
So, uh, the commissioners just approved, uh, Monday night, the, the PU, the PUC and the DPS are running a pilot program, uh, uh, through, through VHF A for home improvement, home, uh, weatherization projects, and it's a pretty expansive program that can go to renters or homeowners, uh, and it's basically a loan system that HED can be the administrator for. So, they use the, the HED or the Utility United States, there's, there's three of us that are gonna participate in pilot program. And they use our system to be the administrator of the loan, so, uh, we're gonna have some real opportunities for ratepayers in our system to get some good loans and some good rates and, uh, do some things, you know, with their homes that they wouldn't otherwise be able to do, so we're pretty excited about that. And we also, this past Monday night, initiated discussions with a company called Delorean Power Systems. Uh, one of the biggest expenses we're looking at coming down the street for us over the next probably four to eight years is going to be peak, uh, capacity costs on the transmission system, which come from ISO New England. And the strategy we're looking at with Delorean is a, a massive, uh, five-megawatt battery that they will make all the capital investment in, and we pay them a monthly fee to dispatch that battery when necessary, such as yesterday, ISO New England, uh, was, ISO New England peaked last evening at about six to, six o'clock PM until seven o'clock noon. And if we could've had that battery in place, uh, for that, for that event, and the sound's been twelve month, uh, twelve, each of the twelve-month peak events, not just the calendar year event, uh, such a project would save us about two-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars a year, all in, all done, after we pay our part, et cetera. So, we're trying to, uh, investigate that and go down that street, we're really excited about that. We have a couple good locations. And I think that's probably enough to take questions on. Any questions on anything?
Yeah, Mike, I have a quick question. Um, at our last meeting, Nat talked about, uh, rates potentially going up, is there an update on that?
Yeah. Uh, no, not really, I, I asked Nat to get that on the table with all of you because we are seeing, uh, indicators that we're gonna have to be looking at a rate increase, you know, that metering has been putting pressure on us for the last probably five years. Uh, the purchase power costs, uh, the winter purchase power costs are driving us, the last two years we got hit on those. And we're also looking at, uh, one of our biggest, uh, purchase power contracts is the Seabrook Nuclear Plant in New Hampshire. And we replaced half of that contract two years ago with a hydro contract at Northern Maine, which was great, but that REX with it and everything really, really got a heck of a deal. And we waited, uh, VEPSA had all the VEPSA members wait on the second half of replacement because the state of Vermont has not decided and not made a decision about whether nuclear is going to be considered renewable, and if it's not renewable, uh, we don't want it. And the, the price on it is fantastic, but if we're not gonna get the REX and everything associated with it, it's not a good deal. So, pending what we have to land with on that, that will create more rate pressure if we don't end up with a nuclear solution to replace that block of our port coal. So, we have a couple, three big things pushing us. Uh, and, you know, I, I'm sure Nat told you, we haven't had a rate increase since two thousand nine yet. Every year our labor costs go up, every year our material costs go up. You know, since I've been here, we reduced, uh, system losses by over ten percent, which was a huge, huge loser that, that helped us, you know, go that long. Uh, and we've made many good business decisions that have let us go that long. You know, two thousand nine, I don't think anybody's been as long as us. It's unprecedented. So, I asked him to at least broach that with you all and get it, you know, out in the public forum where people will at least be aware that, hey, things are starting to brew here and share as much information as we can as early as we can.
Sounds like a good strategy, Dan. He said it sounds like a good strategy, Mike, I didn't wanna say that too loud.
Say that again, Dan.
I said it sounds like a good strategy, I didn't wanna say it really loud, but.
Yeah, I mean, it, uh, you know, the, uh, what's the saying, I'm trying to think of?
Don't know.
Change that, if change that is well communicated is much better received than change that is not communicated.
Yes, I agree.
Yeah.
And, and costs certainly have risen dramatically since, and everyone's.
Absolutely, yep.
It makes a little bit of sense.
So, yeah, it's not something that's coming down the street next week or anything, but things, things are brewing, so, you know, maybe the end of next year, we'll, we'll be looking at something unless things change, and it, and it could. If the legislature decides nuclear's gonna be considered renewable, or if they consider it, uh, maybe a non-carbon and reclassify and include a non-carbon resource, uh, with the same benefits, that could work too. And, and all that's in discussion that, you know, levels with our lobbyists and stuff, but I, I'm, I'm ready to, really.
Great, thanks, Mike.
So, I, I wonder if you can give us an update on the EV charging stations, I know the project with the co-op, but then the one that you guys were putting at the, uh, electric department?
I actually just talked to Buffalo Mountain yesterday, and Norwich has not pulled the trigger on any of the options that we're behind worked up to. We're ready to go, as soon as they choose one, we, we can do whatever they want. But the last discussion I had yesterday with Buffalo Mountain was that Norwich had told them they're changing gears, and now they wanna do something, uh, with boring under Route fifteen to get to the corner of Buffalo Mountain's parking lot, which is also fine with us, we, we, we can accommodate that too. They need to make a decision and, you know, pay the, pay the fee and we'll do the work, it's, uh, we're ready to go whenever they make a decision.
And the, the one, the one that, that potentially was discussed for going at the office, the HED office?
That one, I'm waiting, waiting on the retaining wall to get replaced because it's going right on the top of that fallen over retaining wall behind the office building where we park, on the library side. So, that corner needs to get rebuilt. The contractor that I hired to do that just did our sewer project, and he's about eight weeks behind schedule. So, I'll be happy if we give that wall in there this, you know, this summer before fall, and then as far as the charger goes, that's a couple, three days of work, that'll be done.
Great.
Isn't that town property?
And that'll be a two-car, level two charger. So, it's, you know, a couple, three hours, you charge your car up.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, uh, excellent. Oh, I had one, wait, wait, I got one more thing. Does anybody in the room or on the Zoom know if we have on the calendar a joint, uh, Hardwood Electric Commissioners Select Board meeting? Are we doing a summer, did we say we were gonna do a summer one and a winter one?
Or a fall, uh, like.
Or with twice a year, right?
Spring.
Didn't we?
Yeah.
The last one we did was before.
January, January or February, I think.
I think January, yeah.
Okay.
The last one was what, February, I think?
January or February, February thirteenth, maybe?
Yeah, it looks like September would be.
Or October.
Yeah, okay. All right, so just bring that up that we should, uh, get something. All right, so just bring that up that we should get something. So we should just keep that in mind.
Okay, I'll put it on our next agenda too to let my board talk about it.
Perfect, that's great, thank you.
Okay.
All right, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, all right, next up, item number one, uh, Town Clerk slash Treasurer. That would be you. To present the annual financial management questionnaire.
So it's the yearly, um, questionnaire required by the state auditors. Only a couple of changes this year. They have a new form, we download it right from their website. They took off one question, but they did add a question. Do you always provide a numbered receipt for any cash payment made to the town? Which is a yes, so that's a question, that's a new one there. And then the only other difference, three of the questions, um, the answers were at one point Casey and Alberta, but it's stuck to just Casey does, so we just changed it to her name. And that's the only change on that?
Would it be beneficial to, because we just got information about this financial training for select board members? Would it be helpful for us next year if we, like, I'm planning on attending that, if we communicated which, rather than saying don't know, we could say yes, and then would the note be like X number of select board members have done this training? Is that kind of?
Well, so next year, um, you'll be, like, that would be for fiscal year twenty-three, so the answer will be yes.
Okay.
Because you're going in July, which is in fiscal year twenty-three. So, yeah, it'll be yes.
Great, thank you. So, um, uh, we just have to sign that we received here.
You do, yep.
So I'm assuming, do we?
You don't need a motion to accept it or anything?
I don't think, we're not really, I don't know.
I thought we always had a motion.
I make a motion, we approve the thing.
Second?
All in favor, please say aye.
If it's written like that.
Financial management question.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Questionnaire.
And today is twenty-one. Awesome, next, thank you, Tanya. Oh, you're on the next one too. You're to present the FY, fiscal year twenty-three proposed tax rate, which turns out to be good news, right?
It is good news.
Who tells?
It went down.
Fascinating.
Um, grand list went up, um, a hundred and ninety-three million. So increase of one point nine million. Let's see, state aid highway, we got a little bit more this year for that. Education tax rate went down.
What?
I don't know.
Yeah, how'd that happen?
Because there's surplus and it's trying to come down.
Cause there's what?
There's a surplus in education right now.
People plan those.
Oh, I'm not keeping up. All right.
And then fund balance contribution.
The what?
The fund balance contribution.
Oh, right.
Yep, so that, if you all agree this evening, we'd put to this year's total municipal rate, one point three three six five.
That is all good.
Can we remake the motion?
We should, if you would like to.
I make a motion that we set the tax rate at, where was that number again?
Uh, one point three three six five.
One point three three six five.
Oh, it's on the next page.
One point three three six five, yes.
Second, then?
Uh, any, any discussion or questions for?
I do have a question about, it always used to be that the non-residential rate would be higher than the residential rate, because those are the, tend to be the second homeowners. How did it happen that we got upside down in that?
I believe I would have to double check with Alberta because, but I think it's related to bond votes.
Oh.
The library bond, fire truck bond, I don't, I think it's related to that. I don't think non-residents.
Cause I just remember that always being a thing. And then all of a sudden, like, in the last five or six years, it's become.
I'll double check with her tomorrow and email you, but I'm pretty sure it's related to the bond votes. Yeah.
Great.
Although it looks like it's in the education.
Yeah, education, I think is, they don't pay education, do they?
Yeah, they do. But it's different, it's a different amount.
Yeah, it's different amount.
The municipal and local agreement are the same.
They shouldn't be paying the same education rate that I'm paying with no children in the system. They should be paying.
All right, so we gotta, okay, opinions aside, we have a motion on the table to, uh, set the tax rate.
So what?
We, no, you already did the motion. Yeah, so, so all in favor of approving the tax rate at one point three three six five, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you, Tanya.
Thank you.
Next up, it's not Tanya. Uh, next up is item three, select board to review coin drop request for twenty twenty-three and to make selections.
I move that we set the list as presented from May through July, August, September, leading on October only.
Second?
At this time.
Any discussion? That would be the time.
Okay, um, I know that, um, the food pantry reached out, Heather Davis, and inquired about, um, a coin drop. I don't think she realized it was, we have the schedule so far out, so we could potentially fill that spot.
Let's do it, food pantry in October.
Okay.
So.
Without them knowing?
She also isn't new to the position.
They can, they can change it.
Yeah, if they wanna do it, then we don't have to.
So we're penciling them in, or we're actually pen, writing them in in ink.
In October.
And so somebody's gonna amend the motion.
Motion to food, the food pantry for October.
And, uh, on the amendment, do we have a second?
Second?
All in favor of the amendment adding the food pantry, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, so that's amending the original motion. So all in favor of approving the list, which now has been amended to include the food pantry, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Good job.
Motion carries. All right, that is excellent, thank you. Item four, select board to review and approve purchase of a twenty twenty-two Ford Police Interceptor for thirty-four thousand, four hundred, thirty-four dollars and thirty-five cents plus fit up. This is, is this the one we talked about?
This is the second, this is the second.
This is the one where Danny said, can we just get two before? And you said no, because it needs to be in the next fiscal year.
Yes, so, correct, so this, um, the two thousand seventeen was the one, it was this sedan we just replaced. This will be replacing the twenty eighteen. I do just wanna make one note, which is that we have not been able to sell the two thousand seventeen car yet. We have made some efforts, put out, uh, requests for like bids, sealed bids on it, did not get any bites. Um, we're gonna try a couple of other avenues. Our plan is to have you ideally approve the purchase, but we don't want to do it until we sell at least the two thousand seventeen car, take it rid of that, or we may.
And trading is not an option?
Well, we're gonna try that too.
Okay.
And if so, if so, we're gonna trade the seventeen, um, for this one and then try to sell the eighteen, we'll, yeah, figure it out. But we're, ultimately, we're gonna sell at least one of those and deposit that cash and capital before we make this purchase.
So you need us to approve this, kind of go ahead with that process?
Yeah, just, but just so you know, we are gonna wait until we sell them or trade it.
And do we, uh, and that relates to our budgeted amount of?
Yeah, we actually have forty budgeted. So however, there is funds left over from prior years in the Cruiser because of the sale of the K nine and that went into that fund. So yes, there, there's added the funds.
Right, so, but with.
Cause the fit up runs into ten, so, yeah.
And we saved money last time.
Right.
We ended up purchasing some used equipment to put in.
So we saved a couple thousand there, so.
Yeah, we, actually, more than that, I think we saved probably about six thousand.
Well, the whole new rating.
But I've, I've been looking and I, I can't find the same stuff this time, like, it was just.
That's the used market.
So we need a motion to, yeah, process late after this, like, Casey?
So moved.
Write it up, Casey.
All right, so, um, any more discussion about that?
And so now we're good for next year twenty-four, we don't purchase.
Is a year off?
It's a year off, right?
I think it's a year off, yes.
Do you know anybody, or, I'll let you do your.
All in favor of approving the purchase of the new police car for thirty-four thousand, four hundred, thirty-four dollars and thirty-five cents? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
You know anybody who wants to buy an old, um, Ford sedan interceptor? We got one for sale.
What's a book for, Casey, like eleven?
Yeah.
Books really high.
Because, yeah.
I'd take six, six thousand, our best offer.
Oh, geez, you're really going, look.
We put a bid out for eight thousand and we didn't get any.
Well, we, we only, we didn't really put it out there.
Can we get it?
All right, yeah. So you guys are gonna work on trading one of them and the rest of you guys are.
I'm sick of looking at it.
Yeah, okay, he's going down the road, went some way.
I think it'll look good in Danny's yard.
Yeah, that's just what I need, yeah.
More stuff.
More John.
Item five is, uh, select board to consider reappointing Roger Prevo on a two-year term and Michael Ambrosino on a three-year term as Hardwick Electric Commissioners. And I know.
Their letters were in the.
Second?
All right, uh, I think they're both, uh, making good contributions to the, to the Hardwick Electric.
All good.
Board, so.
I would agree.
All right.
We're, thank you for being on top of reappointing commissioners.
Somebody was.
Casey, somebody.
Casey.
I got it on my calendar, yeah.
Awesome, thank you. All right, so all in favor of appointing both Roger Prevo and Michael.
Did we tell? I talked to, I know, I know.
Okay, and Michael Ambrosino, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries, thank you very much to Roger and, um, Michael for doing that. It's important work and, uh, happy to have you here. Uh, item six, select board to appoint Stephen Mitchell the third as a Hardwick police officer. So tell us a little about Stephen.
So Stephen, uh, he's got eleven years on the job. He was here in Hardwick before, went to Lamoyale County. Uh, we got him back, we're actually bringing him back as a sergeant here at, uh, Hardwick based on his experience, uh, so far, things going pretty good.
The big motion that we appoint Stephen A. Mitchell the third as a, do we have to say sergeant? Or that's your deal?
As an officer.
As an officer, that's all we do, right?
Yeah, that's our, that's our whole thing.
Second?
Any more discussion or questions?
Just really quickly, and he's on level three, great, thanks.
Three, so, and I could give you the numbers on that if you want after.
No, that's, I was hoping for level three, that's all.
Yeah, yeah, that's gonna give us three.
Two additional level threes.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Three level threes plus.
Including you.
Including, plus me.
Plus you.
Plus, yes.
So four.
So four total, yes.
Good job.
That's good.
Moving along.
Yeah. All right, so we have motion on the table to appoint, um, Stephen Mitchell. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So motion carries, thank you very much. And thanks to, uh, Mr. Mitchell for coming back and.
Coming back, yes.
Joining us again. All right, so next is item seven, Jessica Bickford from healthy Lamoyale Valley.
I just.
Was she gonna join us on Zoom?
I just emailed her.
So we, we could come back to her.
We're running a little ahead of schedule.
We are?
Yeah.
All of a sudden.
We were behind.
I would say if you could go down to item nine, cross that off, I wouldn't skip too far.
I'd like to, uh, motion that we appoint Kate Brook to the DRB for a three-year term.
Second?
Uh, any discussion? I'd just say Kate has been serving on the DRB and has submitted a letter of interest to continue. Uh, do we still have, oh, wait, so let's vote first. So all in favor, um, of appointing Kate Brook back onto the DRB, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries, thank you very much, Kate. Do we still have openings on the DRB?
I think there's still one more and two on plan.
And two?
And one on plan.
There's one, okay.
It's one on plan.
We still do have room, people wanna play.
Yeah, so.
And like a full energy committee.
Yeah, right, and the energy committee we need. Uh, so there are opportunities for people to become involved in their community. All right, next, uh, do we have folks from NEK Bent or Northeast Bent here?
They're here.
You guys are here, awesome. So we're gonna go to that next. These guys are here to talk about a vision for developing the Cary Road property.
It was two big.
Item ten.
Uh, what do we do, stand up? Go somewhere?
Stand up, stand up from here, um, and you put there.
So the words don't.
And introduce yourselves and then.
No matter where I stand?
No.
On your mark? Oh, yes.
Wherever you're comfortable.
The left is better for me. Zoom.
The select board chair is supposed to prove the.
Jesse Dimmich, I'm a rep here in Hardwick. Went away for a few years and then flew back about five years ago. I work for a MRH in St. J, but I've been working on some housing, workforce housing issues, to address some of the problems at the hospital, but, um, partnered up with manager here, Josh, who has the brains and the design behind everything, so he'll be our setup.
Like Jesse said, I'm Josh Oakley. I live in Waterford, just down the street from Jesse. He grew up in Hardwick, he's friends with David and I guess Opie, and a lot of, knows a lot of people here. So we're, I got dragged into this because the hospital in DRH has a massive housing problem. They can't hire people, they can't retain people. I'm sure you guys might have experienced this as well. So, um, we started working on a solution for that, this little background that gets you to where we are today, and, um, developed a, a prototype of a prefabricated housing unit that we are now, um, working on multiple sites around St. Johnsberry. Waterford's, I mean, you guys know where Waterford is, okay? So we're ten minutes from St. J. That leads us to Cary Road. We're talking to, I think, David one day, and he mentions this property in Cary Road. And what we're interested in are what we consider edge sites. So sites that aren't in the middle of a three hundred acre horse farm, but they're also not in the middle of downtown. They're kind of between downtown and horse farm, however you wanna describe it, right? Because everybody's afraid of this bucolic Vermont vision going away if we build new homes. And I'm generalizing, generalizing here a little bit. And so when we saw Cary Road, we said, hey, this is exactly what we're doing in St. J. Can we, can we pitch it to the select board and kind of share our vision? So that's what we're doing. And so, uh, this is Cary Road. Can I control the slides or can we go through them real quick?
Can you just tell me where, yeah, tell my computer, so just tell me where you wanna be.
Next slide. It's all good. What we did is we just quickly, this is not one that's really important, but, uh, it's a joke. We, we took the site quickly and said, hey, you got about eight acres. If you go to the next slide, it, it has some features to it, right? You've got the Dollar General that was recently developed, but you also have frontage. So you have these, these, this pad that's there, you have this frontage on a major highway. And then tucked back in there, you have this existing home along, you know, a future rail trail site, right?
Existing rail trail.
Existing rail trail, um, yes, existing rail trail, sorry. It's giving my dates. So go to the next one, please, thank you. So this is kind of how, again, this is very early, this is us not talking to anybody, just saying, hey, this, let's just share a vision, right? And our vision was, you come in, you kind of take this seven, eight acres and you start to parse out these residential or commercial, uh, sites that you can then add some single-family type homes, market rate homes.
To mute?
It's okay. She's working with her dog.
Whoever's on Zoom, can you, can you mute?
Please.
Please, this is incredibly important.
Right now it is.
Yeah, and then, and then we go to, you know, let's, let's cooperate with the rail trail and make green space, right, continue to the back of the site and just kind of enhance that rail trail. So you can go to the next one, please. There's only a few more, so I won't make you go through all of them. And then we just said, hey, with no, not a lot of, uh, work and not a lot of analysis, we could just show a medium-density type layout where these are not big apartment buildings. These are homes, like, single-family homes. You could do duplexes or multifamily, but our, our strategy is to use single-family homes that, um, are not affordable housing. This would be market rate, which, I'm not gonna get off on this, that actually is affordable housing right now because people can't afford market rate, y'all know where I'm going there. So these would be, um, s- small, maybe, uh, sixteen to twenty-four hundred square foot homes. And you could, uh, put, you know, six, ten, twelve, however many you want to put on a site like this every many you want to put on a site like this, and activate what is a large parcel next to a rail trail, next to a new development. You could potentially try, you know, you could potentially try to maybe see if you could get this owner into one of these new homes and help, help that side as well. Again, I'm reaching here, okay? Like a developer would. But, that now cleans up that entire slice, okay? And so, that's when we saw that, and that, this is what we're doing in St. Jay, or working on sites just like this in St. Jay, we said, hey, let's pitch this to the board and just say, hey, our ask is, are you interested in something like this, in a conversation like this? We, we don't know how it would work with Hardwick, you know what I mean? Um, but, we're, we're doing this and we're pretty excited about it, and we think there's a huge need for market rate housing, right? We've, we've got a great affordable rate housing, people working already in all these communities, but I think we need more market rate. Um, so I'll just kind of stop it there. I sent some other slides, I'm sure you have some questions, yeah?
What this community really needs, that I'm particularly sensitive to, is single-level housing.
So, yes, yes.
There are an awful lot of geriatric folks who's...
Yes.
Who's old houses with the staircase.
Yes, yeah.
Are really difficult for them.
Yeah, yes.
Any, any thought of including that?
I don't have a thought one way or the other, meaning that's easier to build. It's, it's easier to build a slab-on-grade home, right, that's a single-story home. Um, that is absolutely the biggest, I think probably the biggest comment we get in St. Jay is we have people that are selling their family farm, they don't wanna leave the area, or they're selling their home with some land and they wanna stay here, but it's not assisted living, but they need something that is accessible. So, definitely something we, we experience, yeah.
So, the missing middle, essentially?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Back when, uh, the Dollar General was going in there, there was a lot of discussion about the wetlands. I assume you've heard about that, and that this would deal with it in a, in a, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
And that property's not part of the sewer, water and sewer, is it? So, we'd have to have some infrastructure.
Well, water and sewer goes to it.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, just checking.
Yeah. Yeah, it looks like there's some wetlands, I don't, directly on the right side, part of the slide, the south side.
Heard this out.
It kinda comes down another side of the slab. The, this parcel between the Dollar General and the slab, it looks like maybe fill from, some site was dumped there or something, it's sandy.
It's just natural.
Is that just natural sand? Okay. But it looked like you could grade that.
So, I, I like the idea.
Yeah.
But, I think as a town, we have a lot of projects that we need to concentrate on.
This is not, this, we don't want this project.
No, no, so is he writing, will you write a check?
Yeah, I'll buy it for what you bought it for.
Yeah, well, that's, that's not really how things work in Hardwick, just so you know.
They do in towns that want housing.
I'll buy it for what we got in.
So, you're gonna put housing there?
Yeah.
I'll put whatever you want, you know?
I, I did go through your, um, slide deck before, and one thing that struck me is I didn't see any reference to energy efficiency, so maybe you could just speak to that a little bit?
Yeah, um, yes, uh, what, what we're, what we're developing is a CLT. I don't know if you know anything about mass timber, but it's a cross-laminated timber panelized structure. Based, I don't wanna, it's a long conversation. I'm happy to give you guys all the details, but it's based on a barn, that's kingdom bent, a barn-bent layout.
Yeah.
We don't know how we're gonna use solar yet. Uh, we've talked to people in multiple spots. We've talked about grants. We've talked to the Vermont people. Yes, it, the idea is that it's passive house, that it's zero. Now, this is early. We're probably two years out from having people live in this house, which in Vermont, once you go through permitting, that's actually not that long, you know what I mean? But, we're still early in how we're going to get all that, you know, figured out, so I don't, I don't wanna...
So, just to boil it down, you're asking for us to consider selling you the Cary Road property?
If that's how this would work, yes.
Okay.
We're saying, are you interested? And if so, what do you need from us, or what would you want from us to take a next step?
That sounds like the board probably just have a conversation about the future of the Cary, Cary Road in general, which we've been kind of talking about.
Yes.
We're coming up to that, Todd.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then, one of the, um, slides at some point showed, uh, housing in the back where the house is now, but potentially, uh, more commercial building on...
Yeah, so it showed a different option where the, the sites on the highway.
Yeah.
If you had a commercial tenant or use that the town would want there, you could split those off and tuck residential behind.
Right, like, for instance, if it turned out that that was a site that Rescue was particularly interested in, um...
Yeah. Yeah.
Just throwing that out there, 'cause they've been, they're, they're actively looking for more space. Anyway...
I got nine, nice acres right in the village.
Yeah.
We're good for this.
Actually, yeah, you're right on the edge, too. He's got the same, yeah, we could do both places.
Yeah.
So, I think it's interesting. I think we should continue the conversation.
Yeah, I mean, it's early, there's a lot we just wanna know. So, I just, we just wanna introduce her and just say, hey, you're interested in the conversation.
Absolutely. But just a timing question for you. I mean, two years is not that much time, so what is your hope in terms of hearing from us, because that would, I think, would help us in having a conversation about it? Like, are you hoping to hear, have a conversation with us in the next couple of months? So, that way you know, maybe we're interested, maybe not? Like, what, what's the timing that you're hoping for?
Yes, as soon as reasonably possible.
Okay. That's helpful.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah. Oh, that's the one that shows, go down a little bit. That's the one that shows a potential commercial instead of, right? So, that's another possibility. Or it could be, those are both commercial in that one, but one could be commercial and the other could be residential.
Totally. And you could add density in here. It, there's some grade, right, so it gets expensive, but we're shooting for not a high density here, right? This is not about packing as much as we can. It's about getting some density, but making it a nice place to live, you know, where it's like, it's not an apartment complex.
Yeah.
It's, but it's not a neighborhood. It's kind of a nice winding place that's right next to a rail trail with nature. So, I think y'all get it.
Yeah, yeah. And we all express our thoughts on being landlords, or property owners.
Oh, as a town.
Or developers or whatever.
Yeah, as a town, we're not.
We did buy this.
Yeah, we're not.
Yes, yes, yeah.
I mean, there was some discussion about having, being able to expand the industrial space, so we need to talk about that.
And you know, the state just allocated a lot of funds for the missing middle.
Housing.
Yeah, so...
And the missing middle.
Yeah, there's some opportunity here, too, to leverage that.
This, this would all be part of the grant list. If we own it.
Yeah, no, no.
We're not in the housing, towns, municipality should not be in the housing.
Support of, plus owning it. I always have supported it being like industrial, for jobs, but that could be on 14 as well as retail and...
Right.
Yeah.
Four-six houses would be the place where the people live, so.
Yeah, it's an interesting concept.
It wouldn't have to necessarily be retail, it could be like industrial on, on the ability to access.
Yeah.
That, I would certainly support with housing available.
Yeah.
And just one other good question. Are there, I assume there's some projects in St. Johnsberry, Waterford that are moving ahead with this process, like, they're going for it, or you're still, you're still feeling?
God, he hopes somebody does pretty soon.
Yeah, the magic question. So, similar, similar. We're further along in St. Jay, uh, working with Joe Katschmer-Zack, Assistant Town Manager. Uh, we just bought the church in Lower Waterford, uh, which is a different kind of deal, but, um, we're, you know, very interested in properties that either people don't want, they're edge properties. The church in Waterford, the congregation was down to two people, and the building was, it's a historic building, it's beautiful. No one was in it, so it's going into disrepair. So, we came in and said, hey, we can turn this into, you know, something for community use or housing. Um, in St. Jay, there's a neighborhood called Summerville, and I can send you all this information, but we're working on about three or four sites like this.
Okay.
And they're edge sites. They're in-town, sewer and water are important, right, for costs.
Yeah.
And so, they're in-town, but they're on the edge. One was Brownfield, so there's a cleanup issue there, but, yeah. This is the part where...
Send us some information. I mean, we're, I'm interested in learning more about.
Yeah.
I would like to see some of the bend of that.
And something to add to the grant list and...
As soon as we can, right?
Great.
So, maybe we can just make it an agenda item for our next meeting to have a conversation about Cary Road in general?
Sure.
Yeah, so I would just ask, if you, then you can guys can say to us, hey, here's what we would like, and then just be honest with us, like, if we're gonna go put a bunch of time and energy into it, there, we're not asking you to say, yes, we're gonna do it, but, you know, we're not gonna then turn around and say, hey, everybody else, y'all wanna do it too. We wanna know that in advance. Does that make sense?
That's a good idea. I guess we'll do it ourselves.
Yes.
We understand. Our town manager is very professional. He would never do that. Yes, he's ethical.
Somebody needs to do it, Dan. So, it's, you know what I'm saying? It's, it's in, we need it.
No, I think we should look at it for sure.
Thank you, guys. It was a great packet.
Thank you, thank you.
And thank you for being concise.
Yes, yes.
Appreciate it.
Well, the air conditioning.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Awesome. So...
Jessica's here.
Jessica's here? Oh, okay, Jess, all right. So, we're gonna go back up, we're going back up to items, we're gonna hit item seven and then item eight after that. So, item seven, we have Jessica Bickford on the amazing Zoom to talk about, uh, from Healthy Lamoyale Valley, um, to talk about cannabis control boards, uh, and how they function in a town, I think, right?
Exactly.
So, you, go ahead, tell us, tell us about it.
Well, thank you for having us. I'm Jessica Bickford, I'm the coordinator of Healthy Lamoyale Valley, and we are substance prevention coalition. Typically, Allison Link, our policy and community outreach coordinator, would come to these, but she's out of town on a family vacation, um, and just with the timeliness of cannabis control commissions, um, as Hardwick opted into cannabis retail. Um, Allison has been working with, um, planners from around the state as well as prevention colleagues, and created the document that's in your packet, which is a snapshot of the Cannabis Control Commission. Um, and, and Hardwick is, it's really awesome because you all are really engaged in this process. And one of the things that, um, the Cannabis Control Commission, which we call CCC, which is, is the local board, and then there's the, the state board, which is the Cannabis Control Board. So, they're the CCB, you have the opportunity to set up a CCC. Um, and there's a few benefits to this. Um, and this, um, sheet that you all have in your packet really does outline that, um, but just to kind of go through, having a local cannabis control commission, it's a really timely process. If you're gonna set one up, you wanna set it up before retail, um, starts in October, so that way you can kind of get it situated, outline what, um, you're charging them with, um, and, and go forth. Um, there's a couple of things, uh, ways you can do it. Uh, one is, it could be like your local liquor board, that you as a select board decide to just take that on. Um, the other option is that you appoint a cannabis control board, and we really recommend that this is a group of diverse stakeholders, so that you would have somebody from your local government, possibly somebody from your school district, law enforcement, youth, parents, uh, somebody from prevention, recovery programs, commerce, somebody from the cannabis industry, and healthcare, so they can kind of look at all sides of this issue. Um, and really, there's a couple of benefits of having a cannabis control commission. Um, one is, if you do not, um, the state will just issue licenses and it won't necessarily go through the town, so you'll just have businesses popping up. Um, and while the state is well-intentioned to check in with your zoning, it may or may not happen. That's yet to be seen. Um, so it's possible you might get somebody in a section that's not zoned, you know, commercial, like, so you really want to, this gives you the opportunity to kind of be the first step of licensing, so you know how many businesses you have coming in, and that, that sort of thing. Um, the other thing, um, that having a local CCC allows you to do, um, is really kind of to look at criteria for licensing. So, you all could put in, like, you know, certain hours, lighting, a criteria for renewal process, um, or a process if somebody's out of compliance. So, if they fail a compliance check, you know, we'll see that occasionally with our tobacco and alcohol retailers, somebody underage comes in, they buy, you know, and they, you know, the, the Department of Liquor and Lottery, in that case, you know, gives them a fine. Uh, and then you as the, our local liquor board can say, oh, you know, how many fines do we want a business to have before we decide that we might not want to have them have a license? So, a cannabis control commission would give you that level of control, so if you had somebody that was routinely out of compliance, um, you could do something about it. Um, they can also, uh, make other recommendations, you know, related to your zoning ordinances. Um, then they can also do, you know, if you're sign ordinances or nuisance ordinances. So, if a business, you know, starts to have a lot of, like, you know, I think common things we hear are noise, you know, smell of the plant, that sort of thing. So, that board could kind of be the first step to kind of problem-solve with you all as a community and with the business. Um, you know, the, the board could also do some data collection, you know, there's different things that that Cannabis Control Commission locally could do. You know, you all already have zoning, so they would basically could check in before, uh, you know, a license was issued and, you know, make sure it complies with the zoning that you have in Hardwick. Um, you know, there's, this is still an evolving, you know, market, um, in retail space, um, so the Cannabis Control Board is still evolving, um, and, and their requirements and such are still evolving. So, um, if you set up a Cannabis Control Commission, you would definitely want to check in, you know, just with, you know, what, what changes have gone, you know, come out since this document was accurate, um, as of this week, uh, but things continue to evolve, so you'll, you would wanna just check in and make sure that things are still accurate, and we're gonna try to stay on top of that as well. So, that's, um, a little bit about it. Um, a CCC is, um, as with any town board, would fall under open meeting laws, and so those minutes and such would need to be, be open and posted and, and such. So, I think that's really it in a nutshell. Um, I'll try to answer what questions I can, um, and if I can't, I will write them down, and Allison will be back on August first, so we should be able to get you, um, answers for your next meeting.
Great, thank you. Um, folks have questions for Jessica?
We did have a group that worked on, um, putting together information for town meeting.
Yeah, that was just a, that was like a task force.
Yeah.
So, the question here is, are we going to...
To create one of these things? Yeah.
We're talking about that.
We're talking about that, well, I think we're talking about that there is an opportunity to create this.
Well, it's, it's important. If we don't create this...
Kind of has to be as a state and our local zoning.
Right. And our local zoning is pretty clear on this. I mean, we, the planning commission's talked about this a lot. Kristin's on, on top of what the rules are for where they potentially could be placed.
Those rules are laid out by the state.
Well, we have our, also local.
Yeah, our zoning bylaws are local.
Our zoning bylaws don't allow for...
Specifically for cannabis resale?
Cannibal, cannibal.
No, just retail, no cannibals.
No cannabis resale in, uh, in, within 500 feet of a school. So, that means most of downtown is not gonna potentially be, so it would need to be...
So, is that something we change the zoning, hard zoning, or that's a state?
There's Hardwick zoning that's in play.
Yeah.
In, in both, and, um...
What, what I...
And it goes with the state.
The, the plus about the Cannabis Control Commission is that the enforcement piece, like, we can revoke a, we can revoke a license.
Right. I, I don't think we want to be involved in this without having some local control, do we?
Right.
Right, I wouldn't think so. So...
I don't think the people.
Right.
Are you picking up on, are you, can you hear us?
Steve, Steve Fordman is...
We'd love to hear you.
Joined our audience, I imagine you're here for this. Do, do you wanna?
No, I just, uh, I got an email from Jess and Allison to be here on the system, so I just wanted, I wanted to hear the conversation.
Yeah.
So, I think it'd be better to have a, a local commission versus not having any.
I don't know a lot about the state Cannabis Control Board, but it, it would seem like, um, from what Jess said, that you're defaulting a lot of decisions to them.
Yeah.
And a lot of control that might, may or may not be things that are important to the town or to the select board. But it sounds like pretty good advice to at least explore this and set it up.
And they're still, they're issuing, I believe they're issuing licenses without any of, um, their guidelines cemented in place. Am I, am I right on that, Jessica?
Yeah, yeah, I believe they have started issuing licenses, so that's why this becomes a timely, a timely discussion.
Yeah.
Um, I know that Johnson did vote to, to put in a CCC, um, and I haven't, I don't know if Mooresville has. Um, I would suspect that they have, um, and I can certainly confirm that, but that's why this is a timely conversation is, because the longer you have, the more turnout, so that they are issuing licenses and you don't know necessarily what's coming into town.
So, I'd like to motion that we, I don't know if we need a motion, but I think we should, um, put together a CCC for the town of Hardwick and get as many key stakeholders to participate as possible. Steve, I don't know if you wanna volunteer to be a part of the CCC?
Details to be worked out.
Details to be worked out for me.
If you're interested in issuing, you know, whatever, you know, how to communicate with them.
Yeah, so we could, we could definitely reach out to some of the folks that Jessica listed, so like, healthcare, um...
Yeah.
Not gonna be a lot, yeah, but, but there are.
Well, yeah.
That's cool.
That's two extra weeks for that.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, the principal, the school, he's.
Schools.
Contact him and see if he has somebody in mind to be a part of it.
Yeah.
I think, I think we could find.
So.
I think to make sure it's done right.
Local commission.
So, should, so, should, could, is it, so the trouble is that the time, like, if the state's already issuing licenses.
Right.
Well, if we form a commission, they can't, it says here that if we've got one, that they can't do it, because we have a, so we issue.
So, we could have a motion tonight that we're going to form a commission, we could, we could resolve that we're going to form a commission, and then next time, maybe, or next meeting, we have a slate of people, we can actually fill it.
We should get a slate of people to come in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It'd be great if Allison was available for that meeting, Jessica, so that way she could help maybe guide us in some of.
Right, I would think we're going to have to have an organizational meeting here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think we need to, because I, this whole thing of if does not form a local commission, the state CCB will issue licenses before notifying the town.
And I, and I know that Kristen, Kristen has gotten permits for this, and they do not, they are within compliance with our bylaws, so the permits have been issued.
Great.
The zoning permits?
Correct.
Yes. But if we form this thing, then the license will need to be, come through.
We'll have to have a local license as well, it sounds like.
Prior to it.
Right.
The town, the CCC, the CCB will require that the local CCC issues its license before issuing a state cannabis license.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question for Jess?
So, is, is October a new date?
October is when retail stores can open.
Okay.
So, so they, they can start putting their, everything into place, but they, they can't open before October 1st.
But a license can be issued at any time?
I believe licenses can be issued as early as April, for those that were, trying to remember, I think April was the date, if, like, somebody was already, like, dispensary, which I don't think we have any in that, in that area, and I think it was a date this summer. I will check on that, and get back to.
It, it was, it was people, or the early, like, people submitted applications, and then they were, they were accepted.
Yeah.
I think, I, Kristen has either received growing per, like, there's a difference, there's a growing.
Well, I don't.
I can't, I don't know exactly.
So, it's, but anyway, the point is, it's happening.
Yeah.
And if we want to have any control over it, we need to establish this board.
So, there is a motion on the table, and with.
And I second.
With second.
All right, just, so we, you're going to establish this commission.
So, we resolved to establish a CCC?
Yeah.
Bam.
All right, so all in favor of establishing the CCC, please say aye.
Aye. There's a question. Jessica has a question, too.
So, it, it's more of a process comment, so now that you have voted in favor of having a CCC, I would have somebody from your board reach out to the cannabis control board, and let them know that this was a vote in the affirmative, and that at your next meeting, you'll be, you know, decided who's on that, so you can just start the ball rolling, and that they can report that process, so.
Excellent, Mr. Upson's on it.
We've got our best man on.
Awesome.
All right.
Thanks, Jessica.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome, have a good day.
I'm welcome.
All right, thanks.
Allison will reach out when she's there.
Thank you, Jessica.
All right, next up, we're, we're kind of bouncing around our agenda tonight, but item number eight is, Dudivine Library Chair Jody Lu Smith is here to discuss the idea of a bridge loan to fund the gap in the expansion project of the library, and has the board to, has also to discuss allocating the remaining $48,000 of the ARPA funds to the library. So, Joey, can you give us just the, well, you can give us whatever you're here to give us, but if you, I think, I'm especially interested in just hearing, like, the, where, where are the fundings at right now?
Yeah. So, it's in the progress report, we opened the bids in, almost exactly a month ago, on June 23rd, the low bidder was EF Wall at $3,250,000. Our construction budget was $2.145 million, so we have on paper a gap of $940,000. The things that we are doing to address the gap at this point are, we are negotiating with the contractor, who was the low bidder, to see if they can improve their numbers, they seem willing to discuss it. We haven't heard back from them, but our owner's representative was scheduled to talk to him by phone this weekend, so we're hoping that will help. And then, our major potential source of funding is the Department of Libraries Public Capital Fund project, which I sent you, you guys saw that, okay? I sent you the timeline that we just received from the New Street Library. And so, basically, the money has been secured, so the fact that she gave us an update means that it's, they got the money. They have to give a, they have to, by September, they have to come up with a plan for allocating it, and then they will start taking applications after a year. In that same pot of money, it's a little layer like this here, there could be another $10 million coming through, earmarked from Senator Lanny's office, because he's had so many requests, and the library has decided to put another chunk into the library capital fund that's already.
And would that be in the upcoming federal budget, like, he's put that in?
Yes, this year's federal budget, so if it was the same timing as this year, it would get passed in March, and we have to.
Right, it'd get passed in March, but it's supposed to get passed in, like, October, they just haven't done that apparently since.
But apparently, that never happens in New York. Okay, so, then, so that is the basis for suggesting that we, it might be a suitable, a suitable creative solution, that we would find a bridge loan that would allow us to borrow, or set up a line of credit with a local bank that is based on the expectation of grant funds. I forgot to mention that, I've had two conversations already with the, like, the deputy state librarian, who's in charge of allocating grants, and talked through with her, our project, our situation, blah, blah, blah. She indicated that we were really an exquisite fit for what they want, they want to fund accessibility, they want to fund REAP zones, they want to fund shovel-ready projects, they want to fund projects with matching funds, so we fit their bill better than, you know, people way back in the process would be able to. They haven't yet set a cap, so I'm assuming that a cap of 500 is a doable, is a reasonable number, it's the number that I've seen other granting sources use, so that's where that number has come from, it's really a guesstimate. And so, we have some other funds that we're looking, some other grant sources and other ones will come up to fill the rest of the gap, including potentially this portion of the ARPA funds. But my question for the board is really, so it would have, it would, it would, so the bank we're talking to is Community National Bank of Barton Derby, Newport, that bank. They talked to, spoke to their lawyers, who said it was reasonable that we could have cosigners on a bridge loan, on a loan, municipal loan, and our idea was that the cosigners would be first in line to take the risk if, for some reason, the grant funding didn't come through, rather than the taxpayers. So, my question for the board was, what would, what would the board need to feel comfortable that the risk wasn't going to fall on the taxpayers?
Sarge, is it possible to pull up that, the numbers that Jody gave us, in that, the board folder, the Excel sheet?
Excel sheet.
Yes, spreadsheet?
The Excel sheet.
Oh, the budget?
Yeah, if there's, I'm just trying to look at all the information.
And it's a lot, it's an awful lot, yeah.
And it's, you've been a miracle worker, pulling together all the puzzle pieces, it's But this is the, this is the budget, it doesn't necessarily have some of these other pieces that you just mentioned, right? Like, doesn't have the, the state grant necessarily?
Well, the state grant would be essentially funding the bridge loan.
Okay.
So, it's on there as a separate line, it would be, the idea would be, and they did give us, she did give me the indication that we would still be allowed to apply, and that, and I, we would let them know right away if we were going to do a bridge loan, that we were doing that to save the project, but we were expecting to apply.
Okay.
So, that's grants expected line, that second yellow line at the bottom.
Okay, so, that's a part of the grants expected, and then there's the, is, is the Community National Bank Bridge Loan also grants expected?
That is the same line, because the bridge loan would float us until that grant potentially came through. That grant could be more than 500, it could be less, we don't exactly know, it is a pretty big pot of money, though, and there's potentially more behind it, so I don't, we don't know exact, and then there are some other sources of grant money that we could possibly apply for, if that one came, one came up short. However, there's still a $440,000 gap that, that number's gone down slightly, because we had, we've got new numbers from Casey, and I have a more updated version of this, it's about the same. And so, that $440,000 number is where we're hoping EF Wall will come down, we're hoping we can find another source of donation, grant, we're not sure, really, but relative to the size of the project, that number is not as, not that big anymore. So, we've been really upfront with EF Wall, that this was a really big gap, and we're working our best, and they heard us that we would really like to keep the project afloat, and we're doing our best to fill that gap.
Did you have a number in mind that you would like for us to think about? Is it that 400,000?
For the loan?
Yeah.
She's going to be a loan for 900.
Loan for 500,000.
Five, it's got to be 900, doesn't it?
940, sure.
Well, 940, I'm uncomfortable with making that loan too big, unless, I mean, we have that option.
I'll be honest.
What?
I said, I'm uncomfortable with a loan at all.
Yeah, I hear you.
And I, I do have a question about the loan, like, the town has a line of credit through Union Bay, which we approve every year, we never use, but why would Community National give a better deal than Union Bay?
Well.
When they're not located in this area?
Well, they're very community focused.
I know they are, I mean, yeah.
And they are Northeast Kingdom.
Right.
Particularly.
Right in the middle of Mooresville, Park, and Newport.
Yeah.
Newport.
So, we are in their region.
So.
Barton.
I mean, the thing that comes to mind to me is that, as a, as a municipality, where we have certain procedures we have to follow for borrowing, usually it's a town vote.
So, that's why.
But we, but we just, for the sewer project, we just upped that bond, because there's a threshold, there's some threshold that we do not need a vote on, right?
Yeah, but it's a pretty small percentage.
Right, it's because the voters' audience can't vote, and you can't authorize it. The bond is just.
Above that, yeah.
And there were a couple fair bond holders on the library that were too large.
All right.
I think it's been, just gone, it's been there ever since.
So, this, this is, we reached out to Bill Baby, so Casey reached out to Bill Baby, and he explained how this would go if we, if you authorized a bridge loan, and the funds didn't come through, so therefore we, somebody would be.
So, the statute was really designed for the lender, because the lender is taking all of the risk, because let's say the grants don't come through after a year, well, at that point, it has to go to a town vote. If the voters say no, then the lender has to then figure out how they're going to get paid. And he said, at that point, usually it becomes, you know, a matter of working it out to pay it off over a period of time, but the statute's really all about, the lender is taking the risk.
At that point, we have a bad debt.
And usually, the lender is communicating with the, the grants.
Yeah.
To sort of, so that they can feel comfortable that these are going to come through. Like, if you did it as borrowing in anticipation of grants for a term like one year or less, the statute says you could do that without going to the voters, but then.
Since we have a primary vote coming on August 9th, in two weeks, like, can, is this something that we could add to?
Uh, no.
As a separate Australian?
Warning, warning, it's too late for one. Yes.
Too late, we had to make out, we had to hang those three days before.
Yeah, yeah.
Three days before.
Could, could you do it, there's another.
Do a special town meeting?
Yeah, you could, you could do the November election.
Right, I mean, I, for one, would like to hear from the whole town on it, because it's, it's a thing that we, it's unprecedented, yeah, but it's tough to, I don't know.
Well, that would provide us some time to figure out how to ask that, like, it's basically a second bond, right? No?
Yeah, yeah, I, so, would it be, is there a, is there a scenario in which the town doesn't borrow the money, but the Friends of the Dudivine, does that still exist, borrows the money?
So. That would be a commercial loan of some sort, have a whole different.
Aren't they a non, aren't the Friends a nonprofit?
It's a nonprofit.
Right.
Um, we haven't explored it, I don't, I don't know.
All right.
I certainly could explore it.
Yeah.
This is a hard one.
This is a hard one, because the timing is such, you want to get, like, you want to hold on to EF Wall, because I think everybody gets it, like, you went out to bid, or you started the process, and your, your budget was smaller, you went out to bid, like, oh no, then you raised money to fill that gap, you go out to bid again, and it's gone up again, and you just keep chasing it, so I totally understand wanting to grab hold of it and just get it done.
I know you cut, so you course to Ken, Jody, but is there any way to scale the project, so there's like more phases, or it just all has to be?
We already bid some value engineering last year, and essentially what we had bid out this year was the value engineered project, it had already come down.
And it isn't, I mean, despite the seemingly large price tag, it's not really a huge project, I can't imagine phasing it in any reasonable way.
No, we tried that last year with, like, not finishing the basement.
Yeah.
It just didn't save that much money, and the USDA wasn't very happy with it, and we already kind of went through that process, and as it is, we have some of the finishings for the basement on the alternate list, so we've kind of done it that way, the phasing is built into the alternates. You know, the, the project has a, has a big contingency that I don't think we'll use, I think, these numbers are really big, but I think there's a good chance that we will be able to end up using the contingency in the project and finish out the building. It's a matter of getting, getting it to work out on paper, so we can sign a contract.
More, more thoughts?
I don't know what to do. I think Sherry's right, I think we'd have to put it to a vote, and there's no way we can turn that around.
Well, there is, there is the contingent that the vote is not required if it's an expectation of grant funds, and you have a year, you have, it's a one-year loan, you can't go past that.
And that's the process that Casey just laid out.
At the end of the one year, somebody's going to pay that loan back.
Well, Casey was just saying, though, that.
It's the, it's the bank's problem, so I need to.
No, it's not the bank's problem, because I, that is honest.
The other, that's the other piece of it, is it could affect our credit rating for future bonds.
The other, that's the other piece of it, is it could affect our credit rating for future bonds.
Absolutely, that's our loan.
Yeah, I mean, it's...
They're on the hook.
So, our hand, our voter's hands would be tied in that vote. Either vote no, or vote ye, vote no and have bad credit, or vote yes and take on the bond, increase the bond.
Not voters, so either you give this or you give that.
Right.
This isn't two hundred dollars, it's a million dollars.
Yeah.
And Jody, you're ba, you're basically saying that we should go with the, the almost million dollars as the loan?
No, five hundred is the five hundred.
But that doesn't fill the nine forty.
It's not fill the nine forty, but I don't want the town to have a bad, I, I feel...
Yeah, well, it's, it got, I don't see, asking for half of what you need is...
There are other grant sources, even if the state, the state fund couldn't really be more fitted to our project. We haven't been allowed to apply for it yet. I think that if that was to not come through, we would continue to receive grant funding. We have Sarah Leahy's office, who is very eager to help us secure grant funding, and we also have Leahy, Leahy, Sarah Leahy has a giant war chest that is kind of fallback option type. I don't see us defaulting. I understand that there is an element of risk, and that's why we're suggesting cosigners, who would potentially pay the loan if the grants didn't come through. That's exactly, we understand that you're not comfortable putting it on the taxidermy, so, we're suggesting that...
So the base of that, you can get, like, individuals to talk, to basically pledge that if this doesn't come through, we'll step in and pay it back.
Right, and maybe that we require some other legal document that says they're in front of the town. That's what I'm wondering, and that's a question for Bill Babes.
I mean, I think we almost treat this similar to any of the economic development loan funds that we receive, where like, if this was a business asking for this money, we would ask to see those cosigners. That's what we would do in our meeting. And that's, so, so maybe that's our next step is, if there are cos, like, if there are cosigners that are willing to do that, if the grants don't come through, then it's the town, then, we then make the decision, if we're bridging that gap for the next year, knowing if those cosigners would...
So I'm wondering, again, back to, like, if, if there are grants expected, and if there are cosigners available, does the town even really need to play a role, like, could the loan go to the Friends?
You can ask that question.
Do it to the Friends.
I think it's a good suggestion.
Yeah.
I don't know. The, the Friends hardly even exist right now, so...
Right.
I'm not sure if a bank would give a loan to...
I'm just like throwing that out there as an entity.
As an entity, right.
That wouldn't be the town, so it wouldn't, we wouldn't be caught in this legal morass of town vote, and, you know, the, do we really need the thing about, in anticipation of grants, when we haven't applied for a grant?
Well, so, if those donors or prospective guarantors are willing to be, you know, on the hook for that, the bank might, might say, okay, well, um, you know, you have two hundred thousand dollars in this CD, we're gonna put a hold on that CD, so that's kinda like their collateral for the loan, and they do it to the Friends. I mean, I would talk to the bank, but, I mean, if they're willing...
So it's basically like a personal loan?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean...
That's not, that's a good idea, true Union Bank.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, I'd say, yeah, we said, I mean, if they, they might be willing to use the loan to the Friends, if they had collateral from those cosigners in the form of, I'm gonna pledge my CD, so that if this doesn't get paid back, you'll take it from my CD, or whatever, it doesn't have to be a CD, but that was just an example.
Would that make us unable to use the CD?
Right, because the, the people are just putting that up as collateral, and so...
Well, you're saying the, I thought you were saying the Friends, the CD that belongs to the library, the building funds?
Oh, no, 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 no.
No, you're talking about...
I meant, like, your, your cosigners, your people that are willing to pledge.
If they put that in the CD?
Like, if maybe they could do it as a secured account loan, you know, so...
Well, what I was talking to the bank about was they're not necessarily moving any funds, but showing the funds available, showing the funds exist, and I'm, I'm still waiting for another reply on whether...
Yeah, it doesn't make the project whole, so it's like, yeah.
Well, I mean, if, if we can...
If EF wall can come down, I mean, the thing is...
If EF wall can come down, and maybe we come up a little bit on the loan, and we, we have another, we have a year to raise that additional money, the library will fundraise continuously through that time.
But, um, but USDA won't let, won't let you sign a contract unless you can prove it's whole, right?
Yes.
Yeah. And we can't afford to give up that hundred fifty seven thousand, yeah.
Well, and they're also administering the six hundred thousand at the year mark.
Right, so, yeah, so there's, it has to show, we have to show the project is whole and are doing it forward.
And with the timeline, Jody?
Well, theoretically, August twenty-second is sixty days from the time we opened the bids.
EF wall could, they have, they can definitely pull out, but...
They can pull out.
They could also stay in if they wanted to work here.
So if we got a little bit of information, a little bit more information about this, these other loan options, maybe, I don't know, I mean, our next, still would be kind of a time card, but the fourth is fairly, that's not the night before the deadline?
It's a couple of weeks before.
It's a couple of weeks.
I mean, is that...
Yeah.
Seem...
Keep working, okay.
So, and then at that time, Jody, you, hopefully you'd have a better idea of EF, EF wall comes down a little bit, and then we might have a better idea of what logistically, like, a CD or cosigners would actually look like, maybe? Is that what we're asking?
And have you talked to anybody at Union Bank?
I did, I talked to Tina.
Tina's always... Norton, yeah, okay, yeah, she...
She said that, they would not take cosigners, that's why, because they, if, if there were cosigners, it would have to be a commercial loan. So, but if we're doing it through the Friends, and it was gonna be a commercial loan anyways, is we're talking to them both?
I mean, if there's there, is a commercial loan, it has a higher interest rate, is that...
Is that what?
The commercial loan would have a higher interest rate.
It has a higher interest rate, yes.
So it eats into your, your funds?
Eats into the funds, yeah.
So I think this is a good time to move that we allocate the remaining forty-eight thousand dollars in the ARPA funds to the library project.
She just moved it. Does that have a second?
Apparently not.
Sorry, that was just a quick change in conversation.
Yes, it was.
Do you mind if we just wrap that?
There's a motion on the table.
Okay, there's a motion too.
It could, it could die, if it doesn't have a second, it doesn't move for a while, we could revisit, if you wanna say something else, go ahead.
No, I just wanna ma, I just wanna make sure that, well, anyway, there's a motion on the, on the table.
You wanna make sure?
No, I just wanna make sure that we're really clear, because Jody's doing a lot of work in April, and August fourth is not that far away. I just wanna make sure that she knows what we're asking for to give us.
So, I think, um, some, yeah, so, I think, though, that we have concern, I think there, I'm hearing mutterings on the board, that people have concerns about, um, about it going through the town. So, uh, you know, I think that...
But it sounds like between Casey and Jody and Baker talk, that there are maybe a couple ways to look at it differently, that we can't, we don't have answers to tonight, because, you know, things need to be juggled, and people need to be talked to.
Yeah, that's what it sounds like.
Yeah.
Okay. So... Yeah.
And I, you know, I, I can't second the motion, because I feel like the ARPA funds, we've got two years to, to deal with those, and use those, and our goal going in was to try to, um, close the gap for people. It's not gonna even touch closing the gap for the library, and I'd like to see, um...
It's not gonna close it, but it's gonna push, it's gonna lessen it.
Yeah, but we have multiple grants and projects that we're potentially working on for the roof for this building, that will need matches, that we don't have, uh, in our budget. So, my idea was, with the remaining forty-eight thousand, that potentially we would find, um, ways to use that to actually, you know, do a whole project that is, is overdue as well. I mean, I just, you know, it's only forty-eight, though, it's not, not that much money, but it could make a grant happen that we don't have a budget for, budget plan for.
I will say that we provided not the total amount of asks for everybody, but we provided, everybody who provided an application with ARPA funds.
With something.
So, um, so...
Apply, in good faith, and didn't...
So, I mean, the motion's for the full forty-eight, but, um, my thought is, maybe we do forty, and then there's that eight to do, which is not a massive amount, but for something like a matching grant, like, maybe there, maybe we have a conversation about not the whole, because that's basically it, we've like committed every dollar of the ARPA funds, and I understand feeling uncomfortable with that, but we've also given a lot of, we've given a lot of money to organizations that are just starting, that are really, there's a full gamut of different, of different things. And the only project I think that we've given money to that's really gonna close the gap is the sewer project. There are a lot of other projects, like the Grange project, which is just in the beginning of their budget project, it's not shovel-ready. Like, I think that the ARPA funds have funded a very diverse group of organizations, um, and that we should give something to the library.
So, my motion died, are you moving forty thousand dollars?
Um, I don't have a number, I mean, I, I also agree with Sherry that it's not gonna be close to what they need, but I think it'll still help. So, um, I would move that we, that we start by giving them, what did we give, hold on, I'm looking at the minutes, give me a second.
So we have to do that today?
I would move that we...
Maybe not where we are.
I, I just wanna add that we, as the town, through the bond vote, have committed five hundred and fifty thousand dollars to this project.
We also committed that with the sewer project, and that also gave ARPA funds to the sewer project, so...
Well, listen, here's the difference between a municipal wastewater plant and a library.
Sure, sure.
A lot of people don't...
But we have given both, so I'm just saying, and that's just as an example, we have, you know...
But what we thought the town was doing...
It's not gonna fix, it's not gonna fix the problem of the shortfall. And I think we should, we can do a better job finding solutions to fix that problem.
My motion is to give them thirty-five thousand dollars, which is what we gave the Civic Standard.
Okay.
It can die on the table, that's my motion.
I'll second it.
And we, we second.
So that would leave... That's okay. That's why we're voting, Danny. That's why they're, that's why they're yays and nays. So that would leave us with thirteen thousand dollars in ARPA funds, just fine.
Well, I mean, when I read all the applications for the ARPA funds, I think I sent somebody a text and said, uh, let's just buy a gravel here instead.
Yeah. I mean, that's another, that's another option to do.
But, that ship has sailed.
It is.
Gone. So, uh, any other discussion other than my?
Can we, can we
We table it?
Issue, can we, well, vote on the ARPA funds, but if we can find a solution to rectify the, the bridge loan, and make this project whole in another way, can we pull those back?
So this, this, I was gonna bring this up in old business, but I think we need to have a conversation about ARPA funds in general, how we're giving them out, like, when we're writing the check, if the project doesn't happen, are we taking that money back? Um, I think we need to decide, and, and there are other towns are doing this, too, like, we don't have to reinvent the wheel, but I think we need to have a process for, if this project doesn't happen by twenty twenty-five, we have to take that money, we're not giving you that money, because then we have another year to spend it. Or, maybe there's a project that comes in less, and they don't use all that money, fantastic. It can work like the general fund, in that we take that money and use it for a different project, but we haven't talked about that yet, so...
Right.
So this is, so, so my motion is just to commit the thirty-five thousand dollars to the library, to be spent over the next three years, because that's when we can spend the ARPA funds, um, and we can come up with a process for that, how that's gonna look. But that's just, like, basically all we've done with ARPA funds right now is committed them, we haven't actually given the dollars to anybody.
But once we do? Then we've spent it, so, it doesn't matter if they don't do their project for three years, on our books, we've spent it.
So that, the...
Unless we require that they, um, that we don't issue a check until they hit some milestone.
Right, exactly, do it as a reversion.
Well, that's what I'm saying, that's what we're saying, is that we haven't, we haven't talked about it.
Which might be a, not a bad idea to create a policy surround, surrounding, and we probably should have done that before we given it out.
So I just have one other thought relative to committing ARPA funds to the library, and that is, it sounds like we're gonna try to do a bunch of work, some people are gonna work to have some more information and answers for our next meeting, which is the fourth. So, we could also, that, I mean, we have years on the ARPA funds, it'll still be there next time. Um, and we'll have a clearer picture of what the landscape is. And is this closing a gap?
Sure. These are all valid points. I think we, I just, just in terms of the ARPA funds, I think we committed dollars, as I said earlier, to organizations that were in very different places in their projects. Some didn't give us an estimate of the cost.
Yeah.
The library's given us an estimate of the cost, they know how much it's gonna cost. I think if we commit these dollars, we can come up with a process of how we're, those are being reported on, anything like that. But I just, I think the application was solid, and thirty-five is what I'm motioning. And we seconded it.
And I also think we're...
Close to ten percent of the ask.
And... No, no.
Okay. All in favor of committing thirty-five thousand of the ARPA funds to the library project, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Nay, I'd rather wait till next time, I'd rather wait, I don't wanna do it tonight.
Motion carries.
So that leaves us with thirteen thousand uncommitted.
Yeah. Thank you, Jody, for coming out in heat, and for persevering for years.
I'm confident we can.
You are?
Yeah.
Alright. Opie's gonna...
I try to stay positive.
I appreciate your support, Opie.
What's up?
I appreciate it.
Yeah. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Alright, um... Item number eleven, item number eleven is select board to receive, East Hardwick Walkability Audit for discussion at future meeting, we did receive it.
Yep.
Yeah, just, I passed it out to the meeting, but I just wanted to know.
Yeah, great.
So this is for your viewing for next time.
And it was in our packet, too.
And it was also on there, um, and then a paper copy for you, but because our agenda was so full, it took some time to review it, and, uh, we'll talk about it another meeting.
Great, yeah.
What's, what's the conversation gonna be like?
Well, my, I get the sense that maybe somebody from the Planning Commission wants to come and talk about it.
Planning Commission has, uh, you know, our focus in the, has been to do, to go ahead and do these walk audits of the different areas that seem to need, you know, prioritization. Um, and then the idea was that maybe we end up doing something, you know, we're looking for opportunities to get resources to fund it. We just did the audit.
I commend that work.
Select board can decide what
Oh, yeah.
what we do with it, but it's more information than we had before, with just various requests to fix the sidewalks in East Hardwick.
I was just wondering what I should be thinking about
Concrete.
to bring to the constant, to the conversation in two weeks.
Coffee.
I don't drink it.
No, tea.
You know, just background, so that we, you know, we start to see opportunity come up.
So, select board reports new business... So, select board reports, new business, old business?
I just think to go back to that old business, business with the ARPA funds. I don't know if it makes sense to have, like, I'm happy to volunteer to figure out process for those. I've, I've heard from a couple of people that we're giving money to, that they weren't sure, they were like, thank you, now what?
I would be willing to work with you.
So I don't know if they're, I'm sure there are other towns are doing this. Casey, I don't know if it makes sense to just meet, maybe the three of us meet and just talk about, you know, do we have milestones that applicants ask for the money, receive the money? Is it reimbursement? Like, what are we allowed to do or not do? And it's a little bit different, I think, for the, the groups that are under the town umbrella than it is for the nonprofits that have applied who are not an entity of the town. So I think it'd be great if we kind of got a process.
The CUD is preparing a contract.
Yeah.
And I, I don't know that process. Once Paul and the executive director get that figured out, they'll present it to us, so we'll get a better idea about the broadband.
Yeah, I mean, it's essentially the town providing a grant to other organizations, and the, the contract is pretty standard, or at least like a letter of acceptance, and then.
Where it's a little bit more like an appropriation than a grant.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, it's just a chunk of money that goes to them, right? Like, the appropriation. So when you get an appropriation, I think the, the organization, I'm just, you know, going by what Nekarz does, the organization requests the appropriation, and Casey holds it in the budget until we request it. And if we mess up and don't request it, she lets us know that it's still there, and we're going to lose if we don't request it, you know. Fairly simple, straightforward.
And it can be that simple and straightforward. I just think we need to have a process for it.
So if you guys want to work on that, that's great.
Great, yeah.
Okay. Any other new business, old business, or reports?
Chamber players are at the townhouse tonight, too.
Oh, tonight?
Mm-hmm.
We missed it?
Thursday nights through August, yes.
We missed it.
Starts at 7:30. We always miss it. But other people don't, yeah.
Okay, that's great.
And voting will be, primary voting will be at the townhouse on August 9.
9 to 7.
The 9?
9 to 7. August 9, Tuesday. August 9. It's primary voting day in Vermont. Did you just get the post paper from the Secretary of State's office?
Maybe.
Yeah.
I don't know, the whole primary thing is, anyway, anyway.
That's how they do it.
I know, but it's weird. All right, anything else? So I need a motion to, to have just the board go into executive session pursuant to 1 VSA 313 to discuss personnel evaluation.
So move.
Second.
All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, so we're going to go do that, and after that, we're done, because we're not taking any action.
And that's without Opie.
Yeah, it's just us. And do you want to meet in the memorial room?
Yeah, that would be great.
Yeah, that'd be great. Let's do it. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.